Okay, we're live.
Thank you very much and all those that are watching us via Facebook, welcome. For those that perhaps I have asked the question, why are the items that we are interested not appearing at our caucus meetings? It is because many of them are in committee and they will be working their way through committee. As you all know, we're dealing with COVID related items, we're dealing with infrastructure items, items that raise revenue for the city of Buffalo. So those items that perhaps that you're looking to hear and see, we won't be getting to those, we have an agenda in front of us today. This is the Buffalo Common Council's caucus meeting and we're having an agenda that we're going to work our way through. So welcome once again, we can start with the agenda. Well, we can start, we can start first with our department heads that are online right now. We have auditing control that are on.
Yes, so hello everyone, the controller did file her response to the recommended budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. And the controller fully understand the difficult challenges of creating a recommended budget due to the COVID-19 pandemic. But the administration was able to come up with a budget, the controller and her team was able to review the budget also. I think we just want to point out a few things in this and the controller's response prior to you, you guys in the public reviewing the controller's response. I think one of the key thing is something that's been a hot topic was the federal disaster relief funding, the $65 million. And we understand the administration is working with the federal government on getting legislation passed where we can hopefully receive the $65 million because we did budget $65 million in costs to offset against this revenue. So hopefully everything comes true, but that is one item that we did list as a concern, a revenue item that we listed as a concern. And we also had a concern regards to tribal pact agreement, the casino funding. We know the administration did budget for this funding in fiscal year 2019, 2020 for $11 million and they also budgeted for this, for the recommended budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. So that's something else that we know is it's a process, but we definitely need to keep our eye on that. And it's been going on for some years now. Another question we had was the revenue in regards to traffic violations and fines. We know this year over year that the administration increased the revenue by 2.3 million from fiscal year 2020 to fiscal year 2021 recommended amount. So we just wanted to see, we had questions in regards to that, that that possible increase. In regards to appropriation slash expenses, a couple of the concerns that the controller had was like the overtime and then judgment and claims. We, like we said, we know it's tough to predict what's going to happen, but it's something where we're reviewing the data. We're looking at year over year variances and we're looking at prior year variances. So we can look at a budget, but then we also want to look at what actually came through in that same budget line in previous years to see are these amounts attainable. Like we said, it's kind of difficult to determine what's going to happen in the future. But we are fully aware that if the federal disaster relief fund come through, that's 65 million. It definitely will help, help this budget, but it's something that we question and that we'll monitor throughout the upcoming fiscal year.
Any questions for the controller's office? Now, can you like to, just one question for those that are watching via Facebook. When we talk about deficit borrowing, can you explain how that works to the general public that are out there perhaps watching? And would like to know what deficit borrowing is?
There's, there's something out legislation out there where if we have a deficit, let's say at the end of this fiscal year, I believe the mayor projected possibly ending the year with a deficit of, let's say, I think it was like 15.6 million. There's something out there where you can borrow, we can bond out that and borrow to cover that 15.6 million dollar deficit. And then we could pay it back over a two-year span. I believe the administration and is looking to expand that repayment by 15 years instead of two years. It'd be very difficult for us, I think, to repay it back over two years. I mean, to be fiscally responsible, it'd be tough for us, I think, to pay that back. So I think that's why the administration is kind of waiting on, hopefully we get legislation where they extend that payback period over 15-year period span instead of a two-year period.
Thank you. Any questions for the controller's office? Council member Rashid Wyatt?
Oh, oh, thank you, Majority Leader. So we're doing two things, we're hoping and get, we'll get a bunch of this money from the federal government as well as we have to have legislation passed for us to get expand that, that borrowing capacity, the pine table to borrow.
Yeah, well, one thing is the federal disaster relief is something where I know Congress has been discussing in regards to helping municipalities and small cities to help cover their shortfalls for the current fiscal year due to the COVID virus. That 65 million is, I guess, the administration had conversations with the federal government, hoping that 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 legislation could pass where they'll have funding of like, I guess, $65 million. The second one far as deficit borrowing, that's something that's in place now, but it's just far as the time period to pay it back. Whereas I said, right now, it's a two-year span, over two-year span you had to pay it back. But I guess the, they have a conversation hopefully to be able to expand that payback over 15 years.
Okay, so the deficit borrowing is what that's considered, is that the van or the ran, which one is that, the van?
Is neither.
Okay, so that's a different, different tool.
Correct.
Okay, so is, what is our capacity to borrow? If we needed additional money for, so we're going, we have a maximum of 25 million, right?
Right, that agreement, when you do the deficit borrow, you can borrow up to 5% of your budget. Our budget for this current fiscal year is 509 million, take that 509 times 0.05, you get around 25 million and some change. So we can borrow up to 25 million. Based off the administration projection, if they don't see us having to close year out with a negative 25 millions based off their numbers they anticipate and possibly happen to borrow 50 million. But if we get this disaster, federal disaster relief, that could be a different question. I think they have a number of options, but from the controller's perspective, it's more what do we have on paper and we're just trying to get out good information, we're going after what we see today and we're not part of the conversations that the administration is having with other agencies.
I mean, I guess the point that I'm bringing up again is that over the past three years, we've averaged about 475 million in revenue. And so here we are taking out a debt, 25 million. And then there's a possibility that we could get another 15 million at the end of the year, is that what you're saying? If, if we still have a deficit at the end of the year, we can get another $15 million?
Yes, we, we have that option, yes.
Okay, so altogether we'll be indebted for, if, if it comes to that, $40 million.
15.
Plus the 15.
So I'm saying it again, I'm sorry.
I said altogether, if things don't work out and we have to go to debt borrowing position, we'll have 25 million that we're borrowing and then another 15 at the end of the year?
No. Part of the, the debt is that you can, you can borrow up to 5%. We're not borrowing, they're not going to, hopefully we don't end the year in a negative 25 million. But they had an option to borrow, if the deficit, revenue deficit is up to like 25, it's 20, it's 25 million. I'm sorry, if it's the administration projecting a loss of 15 million. We had an option to borrow up to 25 million, so if they're projecting a loss of 15 million, we won't have to borrow the entire 25 million, we're capped at 25.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to be clear on that, okay, so we capped at 25. And so there won't be any other options as far as borrowing if we do the 25, correct?
Right, far, far as, far as I know right now, yes.
Okay.
But, but like you said, we still, we still have time in this fiscal year. We also still hopefully this federal disaster relief, no one wants to see the city having to borrow money to close the year out, we know that's the option. So we're just like the controller said last week, her and her team is monitoring the numbers. And we're just hoping that everything work out along, we understand what's going on. But we, we have to close the year out and I think once we get our final numbers, then we really can see what's needed or continue to mine over the next couple of weeks to see what direction we need to go in.
We, we have some time where we're running out of time because our, our fiscal year ends on the 30th. So we have to make some decisions prior to that to move forward. So we're kind of running out of time. But the, the, the other point I wanted to bring up again, this 475 million on average that we're bringing in revenue. So if we take on 25 million and it's not extended over 15 years, that's really going to put us in the same, in a similar position that we're already in. If it's, if we have to pay it back over two years as opposed to 15 years.
Correct.
Thank you, any other questions? Any other questions? Any other, would you like to add anything else, Mr. McDowell?
No, I think, like you said, another controller, she filed her response, you guys reviewed the spots. I'm pretty sure this is submitted to finance and the controller and her team will be available throughout the week. You can email, ask any questions that you guys might have and will be available to discuss during finance committee next week.
Okay, Mike, I'm sorry, I have another question, Majority Leader. So Delano, are we getting, because I know Donna mentioned, say something earlier and I, I want to make sure we clear. Are we going to get the 98 million in June or is that going to be cut?
We have not heard anything from the state in regards to the city not receiving its final state aid payment in June. The administration will have more conversations with the state, the controller and her team, we haven't heard anything. So we're still budgeting as if we're going to receive it. But it's really, I guess, up to the state and the conversations they're having with the administration in regards to us. If they're going to reduce that amount or fully pay off, pay us that 98 million.
So our March state aid payment, we got the full amount, correct?
Correct, I think it was between 43 to 46 million.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. McDowell? No other questions? Okay, we'll move on to Public Works.
Good afternoon, council members. There's just a couple of items that I wanted to highlight and then I'll turn it over. Both Deputy Commissioners Rab and Guzman are, have called in and can add any of their specific items that they would like to. Item number 10, contractual and change order for the sidewalk inspection term contract with Lero Engineers. That is the term contract that we use to provide inspection and construction management services for the citywide sidewalk program. So we'd like to renew that for its third and final year and also add $50,000 to the original amount that was approved to cover the Northland sidewalk project that was funded by Grantster Dazney. We have that project ready to go this construction season and we would like to have this company provide those services as an addition to the work that they're doing citywide. The other item that I wanted to highlight was the South Ogden Bridge. That was item number 13. Your honorable body previously authorized our department to acquire parcels as necessary for that project. Those are all small pieces of individual properties that are adjacent to the bridge. And the original appraisals expired, so we are back with the new slightly increased appraisals so that we can finalize those deals with the respective property owners. Those were the, oh, the, the last one, number 14, permission to execute easement agreement with National Fuel for engine 25 and ladder 10. We have been, have discussed previously the new fire station that will replace the existing one at Seneca and South Side. Through the design, we came across an easement that National Fuel has on that property. It's bigger than it needs to be based on the pipeline that National Fuel has that encroaches on that property. So they agreed to reduce the size of the easement so that it would not encumber the ultimate construction of the facility. That's all for my presentation, I'll open it up to, why don't we start with Andy with any comments and then go to Francisco with any comments on his items.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Parks just has three items, the first one was a change order to Conway Emerson Park, it's a CDBG contract. This is not an addition in cost, we have the funding, it's a change in scope in order to include the ancil system work that needs to go on in these shelter houses. The other two are reported bids for Dazney grants that were authorized several years ago that were ready to implement for the Mulleroy Park Pierce Field improvements and the Riverside Park football improvements. That's it.
Thank you. And you have Mr. Guzman on the line as well?
Yes. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, the commissioner mentioned we have the easement on, on the agenda along with two projects, permission to hire A and E architects and engineers for the downtown bulk park electrical upgrades as well as permission to hire architectural and engineers for the Buffalo Museum of Science North Elevator. This work is in preparation for these two projects. Once we have post-COVID opportunity, we will continue to the construction phase of these two projects as well as hiring these A and Es. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mike, Andy Rab or Mr. Guzman?
Mr. Majority Leader?
Yes, Mr. Wingle.
Thank you, Majority Leader. If we could just get back up to item number one. I would like for the commissioner to just help me understand this printout here for Public Works funding real, reallocation to various CDBG budget lines. I'm looking here and it's saying that the amount including prior amendments and then it presents us with decrease and then it presents us with an amended project, product amount. But then streets and sidewalks was blank and the increase, I guess, is the sum total of all of the decreases, which would be the amended project amount. Help me understand what all of this means, just in layman's terms.
Okay, I know that I saw Director Mahaffey's on as well, but I'll, he and I have discussed this as it interplays between both of our departments. My understanding and Brendan jump in, if I miss anything, is that a number of accounts that were, where the projects are completed and there was money left over. We took a bunch of them, consolidated them and we're putting them into streets and sidewalks for this current CDBG year so that we can do more work with the list of, our list of locations that was already approved in this year's annual action plan. Did I catch, did I get that, Brenda?
Yeah, Commissioner, that's, that's exactly right, Council Member. Yes, that's, those are lines that have been fully extended. The ones that are being, where the funds are being allocated out of and those remaining balances are being put into a streets and sidewalks line so we can do more streets and sidewalks this summer, those streets and sidewalks are the ones that were previously approved by the common council.
All right, so this is what you're saying is the streets and sidewalks that are on here, we've already approved though. So it's not like you're just arbitrarily picking streets and sidewalks to finish. Not that you do that, I know you don't, Mike. I know that there's a very, very strategic and intentional process and system that you use based off of federal and state assessments on streets and sidewalks. You know, too deep for me to understand, but I'm glad that you're, you're the man with engineering degree to do that. But we've already approved all of these streets and sidewalks that you are reallocating these funds for.
Yes, so this is, this is Brendan, again, I'll just speak to that, you approved the eligible list and then the Department of Public Works come to you with the exact streets and sidewalks that they're doing. So you, so for the process that's before you, this is just an annual action plan amendment. And so the plan does not need to be amended in terms of adding additional streets and sidewalks. The full list of streets and sidewalks were previously approved by the council. That list was the, to, to do all of them was beyond what was budgeted, that we do that for flexibility so that the Department of Public Works is able to come to you depending on conditions and, you know, as they present themselves throughout, throughout the year and in the spring. So that flexibility is built in, so the specific streets and sidewalks then from that list that was previously approved for an annual, annual action plan, that is then subsequently presented to you by the Department of Public Works, which will be a separate council act.
All right, well, I appreciate the response and thank you guys for making that clear to me, appreciate it.
Thank you. Brendan, do we have the actual list?
You, you have and I'll, I'll resend it to all of you.
Okay, would you please?
Yeah.
Thank you, any further, any further questions?
I do with Parks, please.
Okay, Council Member Hulmbach?
I guess this Andy is for you, for Riverside Park, this would be the money that we received from the grant from Robin Schiminger that we started on a couple of years ago and it would go for the football field and the scoreboard, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then just a reminder that the football people asked for us to take a look at the entranceway, the doorway to their building, I think it's actually like the rolling doors. But that's a long-term concern as well, thank you, thank you for all the work that you guys did on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brendan, are you here on another item?
I know, that was the only item, the annual action plan amendment.
Okay, if there are no other commissioners, we'll start from the very top.
Majority Leader?
Council Member Ryan?
For me, Paul Bowman was before me, or Council Member Bowman, I apologize.
A quick question for Commissioner Finn regarding the South Ogden Appraisals. So what would be the timeline once these appraisals are approved to begin construction on that?
I will complete the property acquisition, look to bid that out later during this construction season. And the schedule right now has it as a 2021 project. One of the goals of this project is because we are going to have the bridge and road closed for during, for the duration was that we get it just for one construction season. So we want to try and bid that out later this year so the contractor can line up all his materials and get ready to hit the ground running in the spring and make it a one construction season project.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I know that area is going to be jammed up a little bit, so I'll, I'll work closely with you, anything you need on that, thank you very much.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Any further questions?
Yep.
Council Member Wyatt?
With the action plan, is there any way we can get the streets in that list? Because it's numbers, but you don't see what streets they are. And so I have questions, you know, you got community center improvements, things like that, but it doesn't say what streets. So can we have that in the action plan and not necessarily another document that we got reference that have the cross-reference that and really know what's what?
Council Member Wyatt, yes, Brendan Mahaffey, I'll send that to you. And to the extent that if you want to include that in there, but the difference is, is that those are all previously approved streets, so it doesn't require an amendment. But again, as part of the council filing for informational purposes, if, if you'd like that, then we can do that.
Yeah, because I would like before we, because this doesn't have to be approved as you're saying, or does it have to be approved?
No, not, not tomorrow, no.
Okay, so if we can add a street to it, that'd be great. Secondly, there was a, Mike, there was a water project that is almost a 40% change order. Why, why is that? I believe 125,000 initially and now it's like up to 200,000?
Let me see here, so that is, is that the corrosion control one with Hazen and Sawyer?
It was like, it was a water university, Washington Water or something like that, then University of Buffalo?
Oh, yes, that is our partnership with the University of Buffalo and other researchers who are working through the lead line analysis with us. And the desire at this time, and this has been approved at the water board, but the desire at this time is to continue and further enhance the research that they've done, which has really been cutting edge as far as I'm concerned in terms of learning about the impacts of lead on, on water. So we got them started down a path and we'd like to continue and extend that path with the same team to enhance the body of knowledge for both ourselves and for the greater community because this information is being shared throughout the country as well.
So, but why, why such a large number? I mean, if it's just research, why would we have a change order for that amount? Is there, are you extending the period, is that what that is?
Yes, extending the timeframe, extending the scope of services.
Okay.
And I can give you more specifics if you'd like.
No, I mean, if you think it's helpful, I just wanted to make sure because typically I know the last council meeting, we had a number of change orders that I forgot to ask questions on that was a significant increase over the existing contract amount. And I saw this one and it kind of stuck out, so I wanted to ask the question about that one. Because are we, are we experiencing any additional cost to the contractors that the change orders are coming back with a significant amount of increase?
Well, change orders are tough to paint with a broad brush because there's a number of different reasons why a contract could see a change order. In this case, we're looking to extend the services for a longer period and for additional scope beyond what was originally anticipated. Some of the other reasons that we see are we find things that we weren't anticipating when we're getting into our old infrastructure. So anytime we're working in the Colonel Ward facility, anytime we're doing work on our, you know, over 100-year-old roads, we find things that we didn't anticipate because, you know, they weren't part of the old record keeping that, that we're working off of. So those are just some examples of reasons that change orders come through. And I'd be happy to discuss any individual ones with you, you know, now or in, in the future.
Okay, but this one in particular, the 55,000, that's coming from the water board, I mean, the water board, right? There are.
These funds are coming from the water board, that's correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
Council President?
Because this question has come up before about the change orders and I know not since Mike has been there, but when his predecessor was there. And so we had agreed on having more information on the item so that we wouldn't have to ask the question when the item is to be forced, that there would be a brief explanation of that change order is for, I think would help out a lot if we're starting to go back to the old system of just requesting the change order. We had asked before that there be a small summary at least of what that change order is for so that not only do we know it, but as the public is looking, they are able to see it, what those change orders are for. Is that something that we possibly, not possibly, is that something we can do, Commissioner?
Absolutely, no, I have no problem adding more details to the items as they're submitted to you. And this conversation helps me understand the kind of details that you'd like to see in that. And I'll make sure to continue to, with myself and my staff, get those items upfront. And if there's any more questions, we'll just keep building on to the base of knowledge that you're interested in.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions for the commissioner? No other questions, we'll move on to the agenda, can you bring up the agenda, please? Okay, item one is the annual action plan. We're not going to move on that so we can send it back to committee. Number two is the University of Men grassroots gardens lease, Council Member Wyatt?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, amend transfer of properties, Benlick, both in Niagara and Lovejoy. Approve. Number four is in University Broadway Seafood LLC, market lease.
Majority Leader, I think that might be Broadway Market, I don't think that's.
Broadway Seafood?
Fillmore.
Yes, that's, that's my district, can you please approve?
Approve?
Yes, please.
Number five, report of sale for. Number five, report of sale, four nine, four eighty-six Marilla, South District.
Motion to approve.
Approve. Number six, receive and file. Number seven, finance. Eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty are approved. Twenty-one and twenty-two, twenty-one, receive and file. Twenty-two, approve. Twenty-three to finance. Twenty-four, approve. Uh, let's see, twenty-five approve, uh, receive and file. Twenty-six is receive and file. Twenty-seven, Eleka District, opposition to preservation ordinance amendment. That's in legislative.
That shouldn't be, that shouldn't be filed under Eleka. It should be, uh, it was sent to the council president. So just so you know. So wherever you want to send it, majority.
We have the item in legislation, so we'll send it to legislation.
That's fine, sir.
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two are receive and file resolutions. Let's see, that is Councilmember Farrelittle, Scanlon Rivera, Noakowski, Wingle. This item is open, employment initiative. It's a late file. Well, would you like done with this?
If I could speak on this for a moment.
Sure, go right ahead, Councilmember.
So, um, this is something that all nine of us are co-sponsoring. Assemblywoman Monica Wallace, last week called, was calling on the. New York State Department of Labor to issue unemployment for those who have been waiting over four weeks. Without hearing anything. And I know everyone is going through very challenging times. The state is, the state's going through very challenging times, individuals. Workers, residents, everyone is going through a very hard time. So we're not trying to. Be critical of the state's response or anything, but. I have received many calls from residents in the Delaware District that have filed for unemployment. Over four weeks ago. Some have, have applied in March. So I've had several people that are waiting, that have been waiting. Four, five, six, seven, eight weeks and. Supporting Assemblywoman Wallace's proposal that if someone has been waiting and applied over four weeks ago. Then they should be issued their unemployment benefits. And if there's discrepancies or if there's something where they're. Erroniously getting it, then that should get figured out, but. That should get addressed at due time, but if someone has been waiting at least four weeks and over four weeks, then it should be issued. And I think it's very important to the many people in the district that have been waiting a, a very long time for their unemployment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I want to thank Councilmember Farrelittle for filing this and especially following up with. All the council members and getting us all on the same page. Obviously, this impacts residents in all nine council districts. We were having a conversation about this over the weekend and we were talking about hearing from different residents and business owners. Throughout our districts and some of the hardships that they're facing as a result of this pandemic, you know, and. Mid-March when the New York pause orders were initiated, New Yorkers and Western New Yorkers, Buffalonians were. Asked to do their part and stay home and shutter their businesses and do what they could to prevent the spread of this virus. And as a result, some of them are facing financial ruin. And some of it maybe not, that they won't be able to return from. So filing these unemployment claims for unemployment insurance weeks and weeks ago was going to be hopefully that bridge. To get them to a point where they could get back open and operating and back, get back out in the community and do the things they need to. To make themselves financially viable in this world. And so I want to thank him and thank all the colleague, my colleagues on the council. It's great when we can all work together on items like this to benefit all of our residents.
Thank you. Any other council member?
Majority Leader.
Councilmember Wingle.
Yeah, I, again, just want to express and share the same sentiment of my colleagues regarding co-sponsoring this bill. Thank Joel Farrelittle for, for bringing this to our attention. Because it was just today that I received another concern regarding a constituent of my district who had not received. Any type of relief regarding filing unemployment. They've been trying to do this for the last several weeks and. It's been more than a month. Mr. Eugene, I hope you're watching, hope you're listening. You can see that the council has been working this as something that. Has been on our mind. And again, thank all of the colleagues, my colleagues in the common council for. For co-sponsoring along. That way we can send a very strong message back to the state that people need relief and they need relief now. So. Again, I want to just commend Joe for bringing this to all of our attention and allowing us to be a part of pushing this forward so that folks can get the relief that they. Desperately need and also deserve.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. I think we all know someone who has been affected negatively. By this pandemic. As a matter of fact, I heard from members of my own congregation that they've been on the phone for days. Tried to file a, for unemployment and they, what they get is a, a. A machine or they get bounced around, but they don't actually talk to anybody. And they'll call different times of the day, three, four times a day, and they're still not able to file for their unemployment. And this has been going on. For weeks, as you mentioned. So I want to thank you as well, Councilmember Farrelittle and all the council members for. Speaking on behalf of all those people that have tried to file a claim and are still waiting to even file the claim. Let alone the claim gets approved. Just filing the claim takes forever. So thank you very much and I hope that. The State Department of Labor and the Governor's Office listens very carefully to what we're asking. So thank you all. Next. What would you like to, done with this? Is this a, an adopt or an approve?
Adopt.
Adopt. Motion to adopt. Thirty-four items open. Noakowski, Golumbeck, amend rules of order. Noakowski.
Thank you, Miss Majority Leader. This resolution states the. Will to create a position within central staff through attrition. And it feels good with my co-sponsor in the North District, Mr. Golumbeck. That we were able to achieve a compromise.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I have a question, Mr. Majority Leader.
Councilmember Wingle.
Quick question. This process that we're going to use through attrition. I have a question regarding the filling of this position in council staff. Now, if this position is in council staff. Would not we need for someone in council staff to either leave? Or retire or to be dismissed by their sponsor in order for this position to be filled?
And Spencer's? Any, any response to the question?
I can, I can try.
Councilmember Golumbeck.
Yeah, I, um, you know, I think that the reason that this came about was because there was some concern about the creation of the. Lawyer's position at this year. And there were questions as to, you know, who the person would report to, what would their duties be? So on and so forth. And so when I was talking to the council president, I think it was Saturday morning. I reminded him once again that years ago, we had Paul Wolf on the council. And he was an attorney and that we had created the position at that time. With the understanding, but without it ever actually being formalized, that we would hire an attorney. I think when Wolf left, Kevin Lindner was there for a short period of time and then for whatever reason. You know, they did not hire an attorney any longer. I think that what this gives us, the opportunity is to put it in the Rules Committee. And have a discussion about it as to the direction that we want to go. With this position. It stops us from creating a new position, so there would be no money that's being added to the budget this year, which. I'll be honest, that was my major concern. But I think that, you know, this, well, my intention of supporting this with Mr. Noakowski. Was to have something that we as a body would be able to discuss and debate among ourselves. And then hopefully come to some sort of mutual agreement down the road.
Any other council members? So it'll go to the Rules Committee? We'll, we'll adopt this?
The, the adoption, I think is what we're looking for. Because we do want this to be a part of the discussion for the budget, so we didn't want it to sit.
Oh, so put me in a negative then.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Wingle's in the negative. Motion to adopt. Item thirty-five, Pridgen Rivera, Timothy City Financial Status Report, late file.
Uh, this was, Councilmember Bowman, um, um, contacting me. He's on, he can speak for himself. He, he thought that this was a great idea, what we did before. And wanted to extend it. So we have continual updates of the finances. So I won't take credit for it. I give the credit to him.
No, thank you. Trying to get off the mute here. The, I, I, Council President Pridgen and Wyatt proposed this. Weeks back and we received a report from Commissioner Estrich, which was, I thought, extremely helpful. It gave us a update of where we were currently with our fiscal status and it keeps us as part of the conversation. In, in this pandemic and with our fiscal, you know, with, with our fiscal status. And it gives us projections and lets us know any items of interest on the council. So I thought it would be a good idea to continue to. Resurrect this and get bi-weekly updates from the administration and, and keep us aware of our finances. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Majority Leader.
Councilmember Rashid Wyatt.
And, and I'm hopeful that we can get that cooperation because we're all in this together. And, you know, when we hear about the, some of the issues regarding the media and the thirty-five million dollar shortfall and payroll and that. That, that shouldn't be, we, we should be more informed of that. And so I'm hopeful that we can be, we can work in collaboration with the administration. To get this information. Because we all want the same thing. We don't want to lay people off. We don't want people to lose their jobs. We want them to be able to continue to earn, to have them lose their jobs during this pandemic would just be adding. Adding to this unemployment role, which we don't want to do. But we know we have to get to a point where we are within reason and recognize. Put ourselves in a position to keep people on. You know, we can put them on this year and then have to take them off, you know, some months down the road. That's not what we want to do. So. If we get the information, we can make some adjustments and make sure that we keep as many people on the roll as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Motion is to adopt as well? Thank you. Is there anything else on the agenda? Is that it? Okay, well, thank you very much. Until our next meeting, stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you.